Okay, live stream is active.
Good evening, Mrs. Wheeler. I didn't see you hiding there earlier. I always say hello to you and say hi.
In about a minute or so, I'll start the recording and then that'll be sort of the official recording that we then post on the website. The live stream is is up and will go active right at six o'clock on the website. The stream is working. And then just Darlene, since you're new to this format, just make sure that you'll unmute yourself for your report. So bottom left hand corner, when you guys, this is general review, when you hover, you'll see the toolbar and then you'll just unmute yourself. But then for the most part, most of us tend to be unmuted for the rest of the meeting unless we're actively speaking. And then Darlene, if you have any questions, feel free to just text me directly as well. I can help you there. Okay, because I'm going to start the recording and you should see up in the top left hand corner that that's going to go and then Mr. Grimm can kick it off whenever.
Okay, we've got about two minutes, minute and a half.
And I'm going to go ahead and lock the meeting as well. And then if anyone drops, I'll, we'll watch for that and we'll unlock it so that you can get back in.
Okay. Just waiting about 15 seconds to turn and we can, so we're official. All right. If everyone's ready to go, we'll go ahead and get started this evening. I think we have everybody looking at the screen. All right. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order, regular board meeting for June 2020. Like to welcome everybody on Zoom and if you're watching us live or later on recording, we appreciate you doing that. CJ, at this time, would you please call the roll?
This is Baba. Mrs. Baba?
She's muted.
Mrs. Campbell?
Sorry, here.
That's okay.
Here.
Mr. Gibson?
I'm here.
Mr. Grimm?
Here.
Mr. Violi?
Here.
At this time, if you would stand and please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. A little weird doing it on the computer, but we get through it. Get situated here. I gotta pull up another screen. The last couple of meetings, we have not had public comments for various reasons. And I've stated those in the past, so I'm not going to go over them again. But recently, we've had an onslaught of emails and some phone calls and social media stuff going on. So I just want to make a brief statement to try to cover all of that right now so that people don't think that we're ignoring them. So the brief statement is, there's been a lot of emails to the Board of Education and Superintendent, as well as public commentary via social media, about the decision of one of our administrators to resign so that he may take another position in a larger school district. In fact, most of the emails are almost identical in nature, so I know that this is not a loosely organized effort. Many in the community feel that this administrator was forced out while it was not proper. While it is not proper for an employee, in this case, the Board of Education or the employer, in this case, the Board of Education, to make a public comment about the employment of a specific employee, I will clarify a few inaccuracies that can be related to not only this situation, but others in general. First, if an employee has a problem, they know that they can speak to their supervisor. And if their issue hasn't been satisfied, they can continue up the chain of command, including speaking with the Board of Education. In this particular situation, that never happened. And although, you know, people can say in any situation that people are afraid to do that, there's, there's many opportunities for that to happen. Additionally, the Board of Education is always aware of when employees are searching for other employment opportunities, be it for over the course of one school year or over multiple years. In the majority of these instances, the employee is seeking more growth opportunity than what is available here in Streetsboro. They may also be seeking a higher salary or any number of reasons that benefit the individual. When an employee has expressed displeasure with their position in the Streetsboro School District, discussions have taken place and efforts made to accommodate within reason. We don't just let someone walk away without trying to understand why they want to leave. And of course, we try to work something out. Recent comments regarding the resignation of one of our principals have been unnecessarily derogatory, inflammatory, and contain a lot of misinformation. I know I'll probably regret saying this, but they're public records. So anybody that wants to see those, you're more than welcome to request those through the proper channels. I know those involved would like a public debate about this, but that will not happen. It's not fair to the employee and may have legal implications. Mr. Dahlbaum met with that particular outgoing principal this afternoon and I will be speaking with him tomorrow morning. I expect that the principal will clarify a few things for all of you very soon, especially those of you that have expressed, you know, deep regret that he's, that he's leaving and have written to us to say how disappointed you are. Please understand this, you may hear something or be told something, but know that there's usually more to the story and there is. And when it comes to employment, there's only so much that can be said. Again, I expect some clarification to all of you from the principal very soon, but of course, I can't control what other people say. Until then, know that I will try to answer your emails honestly, as quickly as possible and with as much information as I am legally allowed. And also, you know, please know that we're, we're working during the day and I can't just stop what I'm, what I'm doing and answer a bunch of emails, but I'm going to try to get to as many of them tonight as I possibly can. So thank you for that time there. Moving on to item number two, approval of minutes. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the minutes from May 14th, 2020 as submitted.
I'll move.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. CJ, please call for the vote.
This is Baba.
Yeah.
Mrs. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Grimm?
Yes.
Mr. Violi?
Yes.
Motion carries. Moving on to superintendent's report, Mr. Dahlbaum.
Thank you, Mr. Grimm. I have a few items. I'd like to begin by giving the board in our community an update. As you know, we advertised, we put an RFP out to contract our food services out next year. We're hoping that this will help save the district some money. And, and we did meet with the, we had four companies that came and toured our facilities yesterday. So now they have the opportunity to submit a bid. Those bids will be submitted within the next couple of weeks. From this point, then I will choose four people to help me rate those bids. And we'll, we'll funnel that down to a choice. And then Mr. Scarzapino then will be in charge of negotiating a contract. My goal would be to present to this board a recommendation to hire a food management company at the July board meeting. All four companies said, while the timeline is a little tight, they understood with the current state of the pandemic that things, other priorities were on our plate, but they said they could more than meet that deadline. I'm Andreas Johansson and CJ attended and along with Darlene attended those tours with me. And, and I will tell you that I was impressed with all four companies and the dialogue that I had with them. They all seemed very excited about the opportunity to work with us. I appreciate that Darlene was there. They appreciated that Darlene was there because she was able to give them information that I don't have. She has that detail and that institutional knowledge. And she was, she was, they all, four companies articulated to me that they appreciated having her there to ask those questions. So that's the track we're on. So we'll see how the bids come in. And I, unfortunately, they've asked me a lot of questions that I can't answer. So I had to shoot those to poor Darlene because she's going to have to help me with a lot of those answers. I apologize, Darlene, but, but again, it was a good process. And so, Mr. Grimm, I would like to ask that one or two of the board members participate with me when I score the, the proposals, the bids, so that I can have board involvement in that process. So you don't have to tell me that tonight, but if you want to have someone, I only need one or two. I only need to have four people, but we can have more than four people rate the proposals. And it's very similar to what we did with the building project when they were going to submit a bid or an RFP and then we will rate them based on a rubric that I created.
Okay. And if anybody's interested, if you just want to shoot me a text or an email, and then I'll let, I'll let Mike know. And just to clarify, Mike, the food service, the food service company, they're just managing the operations, not the employees, correct?
That is correct. And thanks, Kevin, for bringing that up. You know, it was brought to my attention that perhaps I did meet with our food services team, but you know, we had COVID hit. And so a lot of people's focus has changed and they forget, but our employees are our employees. We will keep our, our ladies, our, all of our cooks. They're going to maintain their current roles in this food management company. They will have a director that comes in that directs the purchasing, they'll do all the purchasing, all the reporting. They'll create all the menus. They'll do all the ordering for that. And then any type of training that has to occur, that company will do that because there'll be a lot of different types of meals now being offered. But the Streetsboro employees are still Streetsboro employees. And we will have someone internally work with this food services company, their, their director. And our, we will have somebody on the Streetsboro payroll that will evaluate, be in charge of evaluating those, those ladies, just like we always have. So thanks for that clarification. They are store employees. We have no intentions of doing anything other than that. So they're here to, to manage our food services program and to do the ordering, the cooking, all that.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mike.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments about this? Okay. So moving on to my report, I wanted to have a discussion regarding busing. And it directly lends to the next bullet point on school year planning, but I wanted to have the discussing, discussion about busing first. And I'm going to have Andreas chime in here in a minute. But very frankly, we're operating under the assumption that we're coming back to school in the fall. You remember, we had that discussion that our goal is to come back in the fall and you heard our governor said that is, it's his intentions right now. The kids will be back to school in the fall. So we don't have all the data right now and, and we know that and we understand that. But the guidance that we have currently would make it impossible for us to bust the way we bust right now. Because the guidance we're receiving right now, and that could change tomorrow, but as of June 11th, the guidance we have is one kid per seat. Okay? So that would have to change everything that we do with busing. So at this point, I'm going to hand this discussion over to Andreas so he can walk you through some of the planning that, that he and his department are doing because we're, we're now planning on a traditional start with no changes in busing. And now we have to work on a new plan. And so it's, it's, it's time to start talking about that because this could have dramatic effects on our school population. So Andreas, are you there?
Yep.
Okay. Why don't you go ahead and take us through those talking points?
Just to share with the board, some of the numbers that we deal with in transportation. We have about 2,200 students and of those we transport about 1,400. That's what we did last this year, this past year, and then the year before that, we were about 1,480 to and from. So that counts both coming in the morning and then going home. And that's K-12 or really preschool through 12th grade. With the current CDC guidelines, like Mike mentioned, their recommendation is one student per seat as a single seat every other row. So that takes our max capacity to a school bus to about 12. Normally, we put between 50 and 60 kids on a bus. We try to maximize it. Otherwise, it becomes very, very expensive to transport students. We have 20 buses plus one bus that's equipped to take wheelchairs. We typically take that bus and kind of route it so it deals with the kids that may or may not need a, an aid. And then especially if we have some kids that need some extra physical assistance or if they're in a wheelchair. So that bus sometimes gets routed depending on the year with sort of regular traffic. But typically, we, we think about having 20 buses that, that we route. Currently, we do what's called a two-tier system. We have 20 buses or essentially 21 buses pick up high school and middle school students. We have about 10 buses to high school, about 10 buses to middle school. They go out and they run essentially a cloned route. So there's two buses that'll run almost the same route, but depending on where the kids live, pick them up, drop them off. And then those two groups, then those 20, 21 buses will go pick up Defford in the elementary school. If we continue that scheme, so to transport K-12, we're looking at having to have each bus make, make about six runs in the morning, just one way. Because the max capacity according to the guidelines, so that's a huge detriment. I've been asked to be on a task force by OSBA or Ohio School Boards Association. So we met a couple of times and worked for the last two or three weeks, trying to come up with some best practices and some guidelines for, for the state and for Ohio Department of Education. We haven't received a whole lot of guidelines from ODE on the transportation front, so we're trying to be as, as ready as we can. I will say that OSBA is recommending, their recommendation to school districts is to do a state minimum busing if, if they don't already. State minimum busing for Streetsboro would be transporting only K-8 students and then any student that has a special need, sort of like a physical handicap or wheelchair, things like that. That model would then allow us to look at what possibly could be a three-tier model where we would use all 21 buses to transport middle school and then make another loop and probably do three through five or third through fifth grade, and then another one K through two. Again, using all 20 buses to pick those kids up. That could take us down to then two or maybe three runs per, per bus, doing that. That'd be a lot of bus driving. To be very busy. So it would look very, very different than we do now and we could, we could not accomplish that within sort of the current contract. So we employ our bus drivers on typically a four-hour contract. And we, we calculate that's two hours in the morning, two hours in the afternoon. There's some variance depending on the route and over just and whatnot, but that's how we typically plan and have planned for a long time. That would not work if we would do a three-tier and/or if we would do all K-12 and have to run multiple, multiple runs. We would also, as a district, have to look at then adjusting the start and stop times. The other thing that becomes really critical and kind of would be at any, any after-school activity. So with sort of the CDC guidelines, either a two-tier doing K-12 or a three-tier only doing K-8, you know, bus service would not be done in the afternoon until probably five or 5:30, possibly later. And that would include all of our buses. And so we would have zero buses available for, for after-school sports because we would have to drive kids in sort of a limited capacity. And then thinking about any of our regular sports, football is one of the teams that we take in the fall. Football typically, we've used two or three buses for the team. And this is during normal consideration. So this was this past fall. Two or three buses for the team and then four or five buses for the band. So we're looking at eight to eight to nine buses. That's if we can put a normal capacity of kids on a bus. If we can't, then, then it looks, we would have to use the whole fleet or something else would have to look very, very different in order for us to transport according to the, the current CDC guidelines. What we heard yesterday from OSBA, they shared, there was a hearing out on the West Coast, California adopted the CDC guidelines as a state. And we know there's a couple more states that are looking at kind of officially adopting the CDC guidelines for school busing for that one child per seat every other row. So we're looking at a very, very difficult situation regardless of whatever, what, whatever else may happen. So we talked a little bit about the costs and the couple of the schemes and things like that. The other thing to think about is that we are not able to, even though we use computer assisted routing, there's a lot, a lot of manual work that goes into routing our school buses. We are basically done 85 to 90% now with the students that we know. And that's making some assumptions about kids coming back, kids that we have for kindergarten registration. But we typically have between today, sort of beginning of June, and when school starts, we typically have another 100 or 150 enrollees that come into the district. So some leave and then come into the district and we, and we get them routed. So to route to any other scheme, we're looking at probably minimum two to three weeks. And that would be two to three weeks, sort of full-time doing nothing but routing. So just thinking long-term as a district, we are not able to pivot sort of a week prior to school opening and saying, boom, we get, now we got to do this and we got to pick up kids differently. So it's something that we're concerned with in the entire state. So we're about 25 of us on the task force at OSBA, along with two of our consultants that our district has worked with for some time. We're very, very concerned. We're not hearing much from ODE in terms of recommendations. Rather, it's sort of, it's going to be up to the local school district to build policies, create policies around transportation. So that's where we're at. What questions do you have?
And Andreas, before, before we field questions, I just was, shared a document this afternoon where there's a group of schools in eastern Ohio that are going out on their own and possibly moving to a, two kids per seat using every seat. And that's contrary to the Ohio Department of Health's recommendations and the CDC recommendations. But at the end of the day, I think that we're going to probably have some legislature that will drive how we're going to be able to make those decisions. So anyway, I didn't mean to interrupt board. If you guys have questions now for Andreas, because obviously this is why we wanted to have this discussion, because this could dramatically change how we get kids to and from school next year.
Well, just when you think you're getting some good news about, I mean, I know there was some, some communication earlier about band. But then we get this and, and it doesn't, it doesn't appear that we're going to have any good choices to make, but the sooner the better. And of course, you know, if we have to involve legal counsel in that to make sure that we're not opening ourselves up to any liability, but I would, if, if possible, and it doesn't sound like it is possible, but if, if possible, I would like to transport as many students as we can every, every school day. And we'll have to evaluate, the administrators will have to put their heads together and see what we're going to do about after-school activities.
I have a question about what kind of planning that you've done in case more parents decide they want to drive their kids to school and drop them off. As you know, sometimes it can be difficult under a regular school year with having parents coming in and dropping off their kids. Have you discussed any provisions for if a lot more parents decide to drive their kids to school and how to get the kids, you know, out of the car and get the cars moving quickly?
We've, we've looked at some solutions for, so where we saw a lot of car ridership in the fall or sort of over the last two years, elementary school, middle school, Defford had some, but not as, as many. And then high school have a few, but mostly the kids drive there themselves. So we don't see a whole lot of like drop-offs at the high school. They have a lot of parking lot at the high school, so we don't foresee that being an issue, but it's really on the other side of campus that it becomes an issue. Middle school this year and the year before, we did a single lane drop-off. And so that one, there's enough space in the parking lot. We could easily go to sort of two lanes and do it safely where they would come in and kind of file into the parking lot in two lanes and drop off or pick off. And we think that would work. The elementary school, we looked tentatively at the annex parking lot to have overflow. The elementary school gets very crowded. We did some traffic management right before the COVID-19 shutdown to try to alleviate that. And we think that worked pretty well, but the number of cars often sort of line up all across Anna Lane during the whole campus. So we have started looking at using the annex as an alternative drop-off and pickup point because it's close enough walking distance and there's a door available, but that's sort of where we're at. We do expect people, I would expect people regardless to, that we should, we would see an increase in parent pickup and drop-offs, especially for the younger grades.
And Denise, we would, we are tentatively planning at some point for data purposes, a ridership survey, but we're holding off on that. And so we have a more clear guidance on what next year is going to look like. But we are planning on doing some sort of a survey to gauge how many people, if we have busing for this population, how many people plan to drive their kids to school every day? Or how many people plan to put their kids on buses so that we can get a general idea for, for transportation? But we've held off doing that because again, we could be back normal. We could be back in a hybrid sense, or we could be full digital. So we're, we're kind of delaying that right now. We've got a couple of surveys that we're talking about doing with parents to get parent feedback on.
And I understand. Yeah, it does. And I understand it's the middle of June and it's hard to predict what's going to happen over the next month and a half to two months. It's just that those first few days of school are so critical and, and it's stressful all around these days. And I would hope that we would be able to avoid a situation where, you know, there was confusion for those parents dropping their kids off in the morning, the first few days of school. Usually, you know, everything gets settled down as we get into the flow of things. But I think this is just a high-stress situation all around, given what's happening in greater society. So if, if we could figure out as many of those details as possible to alleviate that. But like I said, I, I understand it's a month and a half, two months away and there's still a lot of unknowns right now.
And I think once you guys have a plan in place, there should be at least a brief discussion with public safety, fire police. Just in case something happens on campus, I know buses have a hard time getting around those cars that are lined up down, down Anna Lane Drive. And if something were to happen, you know, as of today, now we have the ability to talk to each other on the statewide Mark's radio system a lot easier. So, you know, just to make sure that we're all on the same page, just in case something happens during pickup or drop-off.
Does anyone else have any questions for Andreas? Regarding this busing. So again, I want to make it clear that we've not made any decisions regarding who's going to ride. We, or if we're going to go to a state minimum busing, we just wanted to be out in front so that, so that people could hear that busing is going to be a major challenge for us next year and we are working on it. And I think we're very fortunate to have Andreas on the state task force because he's, he's getting to see a lot of those decisions that are being made and pondered before most people. And he's actually getting to be a part of that. So in a bid to keep people informed, and this was going to be a part of my next part of discussions, if nobody else has any questions for Andreas. One of the things that we talked about as administrative team doing, I'm going to begin a newsletter twice a month and it'll be posted on the website. I'll send it out through final forms, the blast call system. I'll send it out through final forums, the blast call system. And it's going to be, it's going to be as short and quick, it's going to be a short and sweet newsletter, kind of along the lines of here's what we know. Here's what we don't know. And then we also want to include a section of our students as they participate in activities through the summer. Because we think it's important for not only our students, but our community to see. Like right now, we have athletes that are practicing and they're following the guidelines that I sent to all of you. And there's, it's the guidelines that the HSA approved. There's a phase one, phase two, phase three approach. And, and those, those athletes are, are working out and they're socially distanced. There's right now less than ten, ten or less, including the coach. And they are all falling on, and they're not, they're not, they're all using their own equipment. For example, soccer, the soccer kids are using their own ball. And we're following all those guidelines. And when they're not practicing and they're meeting, they're meeting with six feet apart, they're masking back up. And so we're going to start sending, including these pictures as a part of that communication out because people need to see that this is going to be our new normal. And so as our kids get used to this new normal, I think it's important for our parents also to see this potential new normal. So we are going to begin that newsletter. It's not going to be a fancy bound. It's going to be electronic and it's going to be more of a bullet point fashion, but we're going to focus on here's what we know, here's what we still don't know. And so that's, we're going to move that forward. So Denise, to your point. As we start to funnel toward a decision on transportation, traffic flow, what that's going to look like, we're going to use that newsletter as a way to communicate information. Kevin, you brought up band. We did receive news, was it today? My days all run together. I think it was today. I received later this afternoon, I received some positive information and I forwarded it on to Mr. Seola. That the Portage County Health Department has given us permission to use the same phased approach as athletic, as athletics uses. For moving forward with marching band. And they're even right now, there's, they're saying that the kids can use instruments for that. And that's a huge, that was a huge decision because I was on a call last week with the Cleveland Clinic for superintendents. And during that call, they said they, they didn't see band occurring at this time. Because that's the way the virus spreads. It's, it's droplets projecting. So that was huge, but the, the, the band will be challenged with right now in phase one. Including directors, ten and under, they have to be six feet apart. When they're playing their instruments, they have to be, they can't be in front of each other or behind each other. So they have to have a clear path in front of them. When they're not playing, they have to immediately mask up. They can't share water bottles, they can't share instruments, they have to use proper hand sanitizing, they have to wipe things down before, after. So all these things are a play. So Mr. Seola has actually been working with Mr. TV Paw on the side and trying to take that athletic plan and adapt it to the band so that he can start doing some of his sectional work that he has planned usually throughout June and July. But it is going to present a challenge. I had already, he and I had already talked and, and we, and I asked him to already begin planning. What would a band camp look like if you can't have kids playing? Well, I think that we could still do a band camp. We could still get our kids together and he'd have to create formations that would keep kids six feet apart. And keeping all those things in mind, and then they would just, they could practice their marching formations without instruments. And then he would need to find a way then to do that sectional work. So these are all the challenges that all phases of our operation are going through right now. But I thought that that was good news that the Portage County Health Department did give us the go ahead to begin following the same phased approach as athletics. And so Vincent, Seola and Allison are both beginning to work on that plan. So are there any questions about that? Okay. So moving on, so school year planning, we are, we finished the survey that I talked to you guys about with our staff and we took our staff through a pretty comprehensive planning process. I want to thank my core team. Mr. Isle, Mrs. Devers, Mr. Johansson and Mr. Scar Sapieno. They all helped with this survey and we created a very comprehensive survey, designed it. And, and our staff did a nice job working together in departments and grade levels. And they basically went through a, an exercise of what would, what worked and what didn't work from March till the end of this year. And so then let's take these best practices, take these things that worked and let's, let's, let's move forward with those. We asked them what the challenges were and then what do you need? If we are forced to go all digital next year, what is it that you need? What is it worked? What is it didn't work? And then if we have a hybrid approach and that hybrid approach we talked about last time, if we have some of the kids coming on an A day, other kids coming on a B day, then on a Wednesday is a deep clean day with all virtual. Then what does it look on the another group kid, it's come on Thursday and then the, and then we flip back to Friday. Again, we took them through, what does that look like? What do you need to do that? How's it going to work? What does assessment look like? And they provided us, and you guys have heard me say this before, you put a bunch of teachers and staff members in a room and you give them a task. And your mind's boiling at the things that they come up with. And they came up with some outstanding ideas, some things that I just frankly never even thought about. And, and it gave us a lot to begin working as we're planning toward what the fall is going to look like. So we are spending a lot of time on be preparing for full digital instruction. Because right now, as of June eleventh, the, the guidance that I'm hearing is while that we want to go back to school and the goal is to be back to school in the fall. We need to be prepared that if we come back and there is a spike in Streetsboro, a COVID nineteen spike. That we could overnight have to go digital for a period of time until that spike calms itself down. So we are preparing on what it's going to look like to be fully digital because we could have to do that at a moment's notice. We are also beginning to plan about what it would look like with a hybrid model. With staggered starts, obviously the challenges that Andres expressed with busing. The concerns that Denise expressed with student drop off with parents, because we'd have to stagger all that. Because that's again, that's one of the guidance that they're giving us. You have to do staggered starts. You have to do staggered arrivals. You can't have three hundred kids all walking in at once. So all, these are all the things that we're working on right now. Part of the RFP and the rubric for the food services management companies, that's one of the challenges that I gave them. I said, how are you going to potentially address the needs of feeding our kids in a full digital? A hybrid or then of course traditional. And, and so they're going to have to present to me what their ideas on how to do that. Cafeterias as we know them, even if we come back and force in the fall are going to be different. We are not going to have, you know, we were, it's going to probably be more of a grab and go type concept. Because, because as you know, right now, one of the biggest challenges for restaurants that were buffet style restaurants is that buffet buffets cannot happen because of all the reasons behind the airborne portion of meals have to prepare, be prepared and delivered. So these are the challenges that again, we're facing. Cleaning, Mr. TV Paw and maintenance are, we're actively looking into products that we can do deep cleaning in a more efficient way. In a more efficient way. So we're, we're, we're looking at that right now. And all of these cost money, all these things cost money. So we're looking very critically at our budget as well. So that's where we're at. I do want to say too, that our calendar is set. And you guys, as you know, this board approves a two-year calendar and we do have that calendar set for next year. But I will anticipate, and I'm seeing it right now publicly, I will anticipate that if we do anything other than a full traditional start, I will be likely coming to the board to ask for a modification to the calendar to front in the school year with a few staff development days in order to get our staff trained for digital. So expect that. I don't know what it's going to look like. I don't know how many days that is. And that is actually something that you will see is going to happen all over the state of Ohio. Superintendents are going to need to ask their boards of education, we're going to delay the start of school students for this number of days. So that we can get our staff adequately prepared to, to teach in this new environment. Whatever this new environment may look like. I think all of you do know that we far surpass the minimum number of days that students have to be in school. In Streetsboro, our calendar is, is far surpasses that. So an ask of two, three, four, or five days of, of a delay for staff training to get prepared for the school year. We will still be well, 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 well within the minimum school year and it still would allow for any type of calamity day, should we have any weather related calamity days. So that's my report on school year planning to date. Are there any questions about that?
No, you guys just have your hands full. Everybody does, unfortunately.
Yeah, we do.
We appreciate all the work you're doing.
Thank you.
Mike, so we're currently on track to open with just a regular school year. Is that what the state's telling us?
Yes, yes, Mr. Gibson, Governor Dewine, I think it was last week, said he has full intentions of students returning to school in the fall. We believe that we will have some sort of definitive announcement sometime in early to mid July. But I think it could be sooner than that because the legislature leaves for summer recess soon. And there's going to have to be some legislative action in order for us to plan. For example, right now, we would need legislative action in order to be in an all digital environment or even a hybrid environment. So there's going to have to be some legislative action on a number of items. I know there are current, there are a couple of current house bills and senate bills that have been introduced and that are gaining traction. Talking about, you know, transportation, talking about digital learning, talking about budgets. Talking about employ, you know, for boards of education, if the ability to furlough. All those things are in the House and Senate right now. They've not passed, but those are going to have to happen. But Governor Dewine did say last week, his intentions are to have students in classrooms in the fall. So that's, we're playing, we're planning with that in mind, but we're also planning that digital and hybrid. Does that answer your question? Okay. Does anyone else have any other questions? Okay, my final item, Mr. Graham, I'm going to invite Mrs. Wheeler to speak. This is, this represents Darlene Wheeler's final report from food services. Because as you know, we accepted Darlene's retirement and Darlene is officially retiring next Friday. Congratulations Darlene. And I'd like to hand the floor to Darlene for her final report.
Darlene, if you could unmute.
Mrs. Wheeler, it should be in the bottom left of your screen. There'll be a microphone and you should be able to unclick it to unmute it.
Thank you. I did do, just kept staying there. Okay. Good evening. As you know, next Friday, June nineteenth is my last day. I wanted to thank all of the board members that I have had over a number of years. I've had pleasure of working with each and every one of you and I have to admit the patience and support was great. You yourself as board members and others in the past have always been very accommodating and kind to our department. Over the years, my department has to adapt, has had to adapt to several things. After the fire at the high school, we had modular set and food was prepared by the, by the ladies at the campus elementary kitchen. And they were delivered by our own maintenance men to the modulars that we had on, onsite. The high school cafeteria ladies worked at the campus every day. This was something different, quite an experience. Now in March, we were closed due to the pandemic. It took us three days to be ready to be back in business again. Only business structure was completely different. Both of these were trying times for our department. I cannot express enough how important our food service workers are to this district. Some of them work on Sunday mornings in order for us to be ready to offer food on Monday. I wanted to let you know that only once in the very beginning was I ever questioned about added pay or the scheduled hours they were asked to work. After everybody saw that the shutdown was continuing. I was told as they were leaving on their Tuesdays that I can't wait to see you next Tuesday. It's not like I have any place else to go and at least I get to talk to some of my coworkers that I hardly ever see. They actually enjoy coming to work and they work very well together. We practiced distancing and the mask. Temperatures were taken upon entry every day that they had to work in no matter what building. I had three of the ladies that worked at Henry Duffer. These ladies sliced turkey, ham and cheese for all of the sandwiches that was homemade. In their spare time, they even baked seven thousand cookies for their bags. The other twelve ladies worked, were staggered hours upon hours at the middle school on Tuesday. Our actual count for meals was twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two. Andreas had staff members that started shortly after our staff left to deliver the meal bags to their cars as they lined up. His team was very efficient also. My thanks goes to every employee that helped us. That wasn't just my food service workers. It was the Joe Earls and it was the Carls. It was any person that came in and had to do something for us. Everybody was very accommodating. This too is also a good memory for me as I leave the district. I will miss the employees and the many, many families I've got to know over the years. I want to thank you for allowing me to speak to you. And most of all, I wish the best to the district and good health to each and every one of you and stay safe.
Darlene, thank you for those nice comments and we certainly, certainly appreciate everything you've done with this school district for food service and I, I just can't express enough. You know, how, how much appreciated you are and everything that you have done. Anybody else want to chime in?
I don't know if I could say it any better, Kevin. Darlene, you will be missed by a lot of people. I certainly will be one of them.
Thank you. And, and I agree. I have only been on the board for just over five months. And Darlene, you and I have worked together over the years and I appreciate everything you've done and, and you will be missed.
May I say something? I, I never ever considered this. As I have to get up in the morning and go to work, I liked it. There wasn't something that we couldn't tackle. I just, I liked it. I enjoyed it. I'm telling my grandchildren that now have graduated from college and are starting college. When you are choosing a profession, don't look at the money. Don't look at the structure of the money. You do something you like, you live and you can work with it daily. I, I just believe in this. I never regret it any day, ever, driving that drive to Streetsboro. So thank you.
And, and that, what you just said showed in your attitude so much. You're always so gracious and welcoming and eager to, to help and do the work. So I can't really add anything more than everybody else has said, but thank you so much for everything that you have done for the district and, and individually for us. So thank you.
You're most welcome.
Darlene, if we were, if we were in a building, we would probably be giving you a standing ovation right now. So we'll offer you this.
Thank you. You are easy to work with.
Thank you.
Thanks, Darlene.
Thank you.
Mr. Graham, that concludes my report.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dahlval. Moving on to three, be the treasures report, Mr. Scar Sapieno.
Mrs. Wheeler, you know, I'm going to miss you.
Yeah, you, you, you are very, you are very kind.
Very much.
You got a lot on your plate.
You're always good to put a smile on my face, Mrs. Wheeler. And I appreciate that and I thank you for that. And I always appreciate your kind words and your guidance and words of encouragement to me when you know I'm struggling. And you send me a kind text message. I will miss that very much and I hope that I continue to see those show up in my inbox on a regular basis. So thank you.
Most welcome.
Okay, moving on, general fund report. The report is a three-year look back at the overall health of the general fund from fiscal year eighteen to current. As of April thirtieth, twenty twenty, the general fund has a balance of six million, seven hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars and forty cents. This is a positive difference from both fiscal year nineteen and eighteen. This is a positive difference from both fiscal year 19 and 18. So that's two months in a row that we're seeing that. Of 1,619,419.82 for fiscal year 19 and 772,367.28 for fiscal year 18. So we're seeing that upward trend a little bit. Obviously, it goes through its ebbs and flows as far as the balance, but when we look at the historical perspective, we're starting to increase from where we were with those historical values, which was what we were trying to do and continue to do. So we don't hit those very bad lows. We still got our work cut out for us, but we're going to do our best to continue to maintain that and do the best we can moving forward. And then my last piece of information tonight, just a quick reminder to all of you that the fiscal year end meeting is June 25th at 6:00 PM and that will be via Zoom also. Andreas will set that up. If we need to change the time or do the time earlier or, or, or whatever the case may be, just let me know and I can try to accommodate those, that situation. I don't foresee the meeting going extremely long, maybe a half hour tops. Those meetings tend to be pretty quick. We just have some, some things that we need to approve in order to end our fiscal year. So just wanted to share that piece of information with you in case that fell off of your radar and we'll send out the proper notice as well for that. That concludes my report, Mr. Graham.
All right. Thank you, CJ. Moving on to 3C, suit board, for board reports, Mrs. Baba.
I do not have a report tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to Mrs. Campbell.
The Educational Foundation, there's a meeting scheduled for later this month. I have not heard if we're going to be meeting or not, so I'll keep you guys up to date on that. PTA update is they're working towards launching a new website. They're looking at providing an e-store and a member directory. There's other features that are per for, are provided by the Ohio PTA. And Member Hub is a, has a partnership with Ohio PTA. June 1st kicked off their new board. They had a cookie fundraiser for members that was advertised on the Facebook page and it was fun and very successful. They're looking forward to doing other fun fundraising ideas over the summer. They are working on the possibility of an online tailgate party if the actual event can't take place. You know, with not knowing what's happening with being able to gather, they're looking at some alternatives for that event. That's it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gibson.
Yes, for athletics, the athletic department is currently following the reopening plan for all their facilities. I emailed it out to the board. You should have it right now. If anyone watching at home wants to see a copy of it, let me know and I'll email you a copy as well. In addition to that, each sport has been issued a no-touch thermometer. So they can follow the plan and, and check everyone's temperature when they're arriving. All the fall sports teams are, are getting into the swing of it. Football, volleyball, cross country, golf and soccer have all started their skills training as a part of the big three pay, three-phase approved by the, the state. The stadium is open for people who want to go and walk on the track. It's been cleaned and sanitized. And just today, it was approved that the Ohio High School Athletic Association has authorized students' parents for fall sports to get their physicals approved through telecommunication, which is pretty amazing. You don't actually have to go in and get your physical. You call your doctor that you got your physical from last year. Talk to him over the phone and then he will, he will send it in for you. So it should make things a little easier. We're not having to go to the doctor. Again, social distancing like that. Other than that, it looks like we're, we're hopefully, fingers crossed, setting up for another exciting fall season. That's all I have.
Great. Thank you, Andy. For music boosters, there hasn't been a lot of activity, of course, but I'm looking forward to hearing from Mr. Seal and Mrs. Logan on what they're doing and, and hopefully we'll have a nice report for you on, on the startup of the new band season for next month. And with the city, there's, of course, the, the light project is still going on. They're, they're trying to wrap that up as soon as possible. We did have groundbreaking for the fire station, the official groundbreaking last weekend, and just want to say thanks to Mr. Dalva for showing up for that. So he was the representative for the school. We had a small close company, but tried to stay as distant as possible from each other. So it all worked out nice. It was a beautiful day. So thank you, Mike, for, for being there. Moving on to Mr. Violi.
Kevin, I do not have a report. I sent the email from last month's minute meeting notes from Maplewood. You should have those or should have gotten them, I think around the 20th, 25th last month. So that's all I got to report.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to consent agenda items. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the consent agenda items B through O.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. I just wanted to say thank you for donations to Allen Alloys. They donated $250 to the Educational Foundation for the Jay Sharecourt Memorial Scholarship. And also to a local businesswoman, local business owner, Elizabeth Berry, who donated $3,000 to the Educational Foundation for a special scholarship. Anything else? Hearing none. CJ, please call for the vote.
Mrs. Baba?
I had a question about Jay.
Sorry about that. Go ahead.
Um, so that was the transportation resolution. We're deciding if we can or can't bus kids. Maybe Andreas is the better one to answer this. There's 18 kids that are going to Biomed. When we figured out if we could or couldn't for them, was that based on the one kid per every other seat? Or just our time is not lining up again this year?
Now, can I answer that, Mr. Dalva?
Go ahead and Andreas, answer that.
So Biomed, I shared this with Tracy Campbell earlier this week. Biomed has combined their middle school and their high school campuses in Rootstown. The Rootstown campus is not one that we have served because of our previous timing lies outside of the 30 minutes for the district. And so we still plan on busing Biomed to their Ravenna campus, which is right, it's right around the corner of Maplewood for their fourth and fifth grade, and then to the Shaler'sville campus, which last year was their middle school. This year will be their elementary campus. And again, if, you know, going back to sort of the transportation qualms that we have, if we were to go to Rootstown, that would require an additional bus purchasing and additional staffing, et cetera, et cetera. But it is outside the 30-minute limit for us.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
And then I just have one question. We bussed last year to CBCA, correct?
No, we do not bust a CBCA.
Oh, we didn't. Okay.
We bust a Seton, which is sort of right on Storo there in Hudson.
Yeah, I know where that is.
And then VCA and Aurora, but not CB.
Not CBCA. Got it. Okay.
Okay. If there's no other comments or questions, CJ, please call for the vote.
Mrs. Baba?
Yes.
Mr. Violi?
Yes.
Mrs. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to superintendent's recommendations, Mr. Dalva.
Thank you. I have several items made. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the following resigns, resignations.
I'll move.
I'll second. Any discussion?
I'll second.
Yes, I, I have, I would like to talk about each one of these. First of all, just quickly, you see Katie Naggy's resignation on there. So she will be actually unemployed here for about five minutes. We'll have another recommendation below here, but she's resigning as the Assistant Principal at Streetsboro Elementary. Moving on, I'd like to talk a little bit about Mr. Brian. Mr. Brian interviewed and was awarded a job in the South Uklinher School District. I wanted to thank Mr. Brian for his hard work. Through his hard work and leadership at Duffer and of course, with the staff's hard work. We were probably, we, we felt we were on track for a solid A in that building. He moved that building light years in two years. Matt has proven himself to be a guy that's very data-driven. He has that ability to really look into numbers and look into data and make actionable plans based on data. I will say probably my career, I don't think I've ever met anyone that can quite do the things that he can do with data. So I think South Uklinher, he's going to their middle school. This is, this is a nice change for him. This, he, he does want to be a superintendent someday and he knew that being an intermediate principal for seven years, he needed to do more than that. So he wanted the various experiences and he was offered that job in South Uklinher at the middle school. It's a large school, a large school. And he is super excited for that opportunity. So I wanted to thank Matt for his leadership and service here in the Streetsboro School District personally, and, and I wanted to tell him good luck. So the next resignation, Mr. Hoag, Jamie. What I wanted to say about Jamie is this, Jamie could be probably one of the most capable building leaders I've ever been associated with. Jamie had that, has that, you know, he was confronted with some pretty big challenges when he took over the high school. And he also moved, did a mid-year move. And he took us, he took that, the culture of that building and, and he just moved that building forward. He has this unbelievable knack at creating positive relationships with kids, with parents, with staff. And, and one of Jamie's strengths is, is it even when he doesn't necessarily agree with the situation, he's able to facilitate both sides. And that's a rare quality. That's something that when you have, when, when you're, you're thrust into a situation that maybe you have your own opinions about or your own passion about, it's tough to facilitate both sides and Jamie was very good at that. Jamie, this is a great opportunity for him. Jamie, I don't, I don't want to share what his future holds for him, but I do know that, you know, he, he there, he has ideas on, on moving up the ladder, if you will, and I think moving to Independence is, is a step in that direction. It's a, it's, you know, the Independence is a little bit different environment than the city of Streetsboro. I will tell you, I had a very good meeting with him today and, and he expressed to me, this is like, this is like a double-edged sword for him because while he absolutely loves the kids and the community and the staff here, he's excited about this opportunity and, and he's excited to dig in and get going and he's already, and he's already making a positive intact, impact up there in Independence. I've talked to his new superintendent quite a bit throughout this process and, and, and I had nothing but good things to say about Jamie and Mr. Hegadash is extremely excited and the community's excited to have him. So I did want to say congratulations, Jamie. We're going to really, really miss you. We have huge shoes to fill. I want to personally thank you for taking the high school where, from where it was to where it is now. I know the students are going to miss you. I know the staff will miss you and I know this community will miss you. So, thank you, Jamie.
All right. Thank you. Are there any other comments? Hearing none, if.
I would, I would actually like to say something. I want to thank Matt for his service. I haven't had the opportunity to work very much with him and hearing the accomplishments that he had. That's, I'm very grateful for that. I'd also like to say regarding Jamie Hoag, I am very, very appreciative to what he's done for our community, the relationship that he built with our students and with our staff. And, you know, with our community itself, his leadership skills are, are phenomenal. His communication skills are amazing. And it is a huge loss for our district. But I do wish him the best.
Okay. Any other comments? Seen nobody moving. I will ask for the vote.
Mr. Violi?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mrs. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Baba?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item B, it is recommended the Board of Education hire Katie Naggy as principal at Henry Duffer Intermediate School for 204 days at the salary of 85,000 plus administrative benefits. Effective August 1st, 2020 through July 31st, 2022.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I just want to announce that I'm, I'm excited about this. Katie is super excited to roll her sleeves up and, and, and jump in there and, and take what Matt started and, 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 and make it her own. And Katie has a lot of, of experience in not only primary literacy, but she has a passion in mathematics. We have a, a lot of folks at Duffer Intermediate School that, that have a passion for mathematics as well. I think that's a great fit and, and also Katie, a lot of people don't know this, but she is, she is also very passionate about the integration of technology and curriculum. And when we were forced to make an overnight decision to send kids home and learn digitally, she presented herself as a leader in the, in the district on, on getting and helping teachers to integrate technology in their instruction. And so, and I do know that our Duffer staff, they're a very technologically savvy staff. So again, that's a great match. And so I'm very excited to give Katie this opportunity. We're trying to build some internal capacity as well. We want to, we want to take the people that we have here and help them grow and, and I think this is a perfect fit for Katie.
All right. Any other comments? Hearing none, please call for the vote.
Mrs. Baba?
Yes.
Mr. Violi?
Yes.
Mrs. Campbell?
Mrs. Campbell, you're on mute.
I'm sorry.
Sorry. Yes.
That's okay. Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes, that motion carries.
Items, item C, it is recommended the Board of Education approve the certified contracts for the 2021 school year as shown below.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, please call for the vote.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mrs. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Baba?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Violi?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item D, it is recommended the Board of Education approve the classified contracts as shown below for the 2021 school year.
I'll move.
I'll second.
It's been moved, moved and double seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, please call for the vote.
You guys are sure keeping me on my toes tonight. Mrs. Baba?
Yes.
Mr. Violi?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mrs. Campbell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
That concludes my recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Dalva. Moving on to treasures and recommendations, CJ.
Okay, thank you. I have three this evening. My first one is it is recommended that the Board of Education approve payment to Bob Long for the position of WSTB manager for fiscal year 18 in the amount of $4,269.34 and fiscal year 19 in the amount of $4,334.77.
I'll move.
Second.
It moved and seconded. Discussion?
Uh, yes, this particular item you guys approved in the previous two fiscal years. However, when the district moved to E-Finance Plus in 2017, if you remember, there was a changing of payroll staff. We lost a payroll clerk at that time. At that point in time, the, the payroll clerk had built in the extra duty payment to Mr. Long's pay. So he never filled out an extra duty form and got paid like halfway through the school year. And then at the end of the school year, he would just get paid a certain stip, like a certain piece of the pie each over the 26 pays, which I'm not quite sure why that was instituted, how that was instituted. But however, that was not instituted when we moved from that and moved on into this regime in the treasurer's office and the new software. So Mr. Long wasn't used to submitting extra duty pay sheets to get paid for those. And our procedure in the treasurer's office is we'll send something out asking people to submit those. We'll remind them, but we're also not going to hunt everybody down to try and get those. Mr. Long, however, this was, this was a miscommunication where Mr. Long just assumed that he was still getting that in his pay over the course of his 26 pays because of previous payroll clerk and how that was situated. And however, that was done prior, but that's not how the contract's written. So with that said, Mr. Long did not receive a supplemental payment for those two years. He has filled out an extra duty payment to receive a supplemental payment for this year. But because of the miscommunication and because of how it was communicated to him prior in 2017 to now, I think it's only fair that we compensate him because he does such a great job as the WTSB manager. Or STB, sorry. And that's why you see this recommendation tonight.
So we're just making him whole for something that we've already voted on?
Yes, you already voted on it and I, we probably could have used the previous ones to, you know, pay him off of. Yes, you already voted on it and I, we probably could have used the previous ones to, uh, you know, pay him off of. But for full disclosure and full transparency, that's why I put this on here tonight. I want to make sure that we make Bob whole. But I also want you guys to know why and how that happened and why that happened. So.
How is he going to be paid in the future after this has been paid?
Yeah, Mr. Long, this year he filled out his extra duty form. So we're gonna, we're gonna pay him based off of him filling out his extra duty form.
So it'll be in, in his individual paychecks or is it gonna be?
No, he'll, he'll get half halfway through the school year and the other half at the end of the school year, just like everybody else that's in an, in an extra duty position.
Good.
All right. Very good. I think that's the best way to handle it. Thank you. Um, if there's no other comments or questions, please call for the vote.
Mr. Violi?
Yes.
Mrs. Baba?
Yes.
Mrs. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Grimm?
Yes. Motion carries.
Okay. My second recommendation is it is recommended the Board of Education approve the renewal of the district's insurance policy through the Ohio Schools Plan. For the 2020, 2021 school year at the cost of $132,059.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Uh, yes, quick discussion here. Uh, we went out for quotes. Uh, Liberty and Right decided that they would not like to quote because of our loss ratios. Ohio School Plans, uh, quotes, we've been with them for years. Uh, we also did an increase of our coverage here, uh, on our cyber coverage. We took it from, um. One million to two million in coverage. And then there was a 2% uh, inflation increase to our property on this. However, we've been pretty happy with Ohio Schools Plan, uh, throughout the years, it seems. So this is our recommendation moving forward.
That an increase over last year?
Yes.
By how much?
Uh.
Approximately.
It's about, probably about, uh, eight grand. We did increase, uh, some, some, the cyber coverage, like I said, especially given the climate that we're in, that made sense. Um, and then there was the 2% uh, inflation. But we also got about $4,800 back from them this year in auto insurance. Uh, because we weren't driving. So, uh, you know, we, we go out for quotes, we try to get what, what we can and we, and we look and see and try to do the apples to apples comparison. Um, but it's hard, it is hard to get quotes because of our loss runs. It's not an easy thing to do. Uh, we still have, you know. Litigation that have occurred and, and, and fires and things of that nature, bus accidents and things of that nature that are still hanging out there. Um, but I did have a conversation, uh, with our agent and those things, the good news is those things will be eventually falling off, uh, in the future. So.
Thank you, CJ.
You're welcome.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, please call for the vote.
Mr. Violi?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Grimm?
Yes.
Mrs. Baba?
Yes.
Mrs. Campbell?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. All right. I have one more recommendation this evening. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the renewal of the district's excess crime policy through travelers for the 2020, 2020, 2021 school year. At the cost of $2,835.
I'll move.
I'll move. I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, we added this last year, uh, for the first time to our policy through travelers. It's an additional policy. It carries a million dollars in additional crime, uh, coverage. Um, we felt that this policy would help us in cer- certain situations. And it would help us make the district whole again if certain situations arise. Uh, we didn't want to go overboard, but we also didn't want to go too little. So we did it last year. We felt comfortable with it. Um, last year it was proposed as the total package. This year we're doing it separately. Um, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention as a separate item instead of included with the OSP recommendation.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, please call for the vote.
Mr. Grimm?
Yes.
Mrs. Baba?
Yes.
Mrs. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Violi?
Yes.
And that motion carries. Anything else?
My recommendations, Mr.
All right. Thank you, CJ. Moving on to new business, um, before we take a vote later in this meeting, I just wanted to, uh, make a comment about the change of board meeting location. Um, in the last few weeks, I've had some discussions with, uh, Mr. Dalva, the Board of Education, Jim Boardwine, Bob Long, Andreas Johansson. And it all centered around moving the Board of Education meetings from Deffer Intermediate to the high school auditorium. Um, we realized that there's a lot of benefits in doing this and I've heard nothing negative at this point. Um, so is what we've come up with, better seating, it's more comfortable and less noise. So as people get up and move around, we're not hearing. Now chairs clanging together and, and banging against tables. Um, there's better spacing. So whether we're under social distancing restrictions or people just want to sit farther apart, they have that opportunity. Um, better sound and video. It's a, it's a theater. It's professionally designed. And, um, you know, we've realized that there is going to be a lot better sound and better video. Um, our talented staff, everybody that I've mentioned already, including some students, uh, will be able to live stream audio and video. And also maintain a video for archive. So everything's in place, um, to, to keep, uh, the archives the way we have it. And, and even have better audio and video. So we're not, uh, getting a lot of squealing and, and it's either people can't hear or they, or they, it's too loud, so on, so forth. Um, student presentations, this is where it gets good, uh, in my opinion. If a student is there, uh, whether it's, you know, for one student or a group of students, a class, uh, whatever they, if they're there for a presentation. And sometimes you see the parents, um, trying to stand up and, and do this over top of everybody else to get a picture of their, of their, of their child. Um, so this will eliminate that every, you know, as the, as the seating goes upward. It gives everybody a better opportunity to see what's happening. Uh, those, those, uh, teachers and their students will be brought up on stage for those presentations. Um, and again, we can hear things better. Uh, any presentations that we see on the screen, uh, can be projected onto the TVs. And also, uh, Mr. Boardwine says that there's a TV that can be brought in mobily, uh, so that we can see the presentation as a board without having to move around and, and turn around a lot. Um, if there's sports or a choir presentation that's getting ready to happen or even thrive, if they're getting ready to have a, uh, uh, one, one of their shows. Um, it's not going to be a problem and even, uh, initially, Mr. Boardwine had said, well, we can just take all of our stuff. Uh, for, for our plays and move it in the back and close off a curtain and, and hide everything. My feeling, and, and if you have feelings about it, I would certainly like to hear that as well. But we're in a school and if things are set up behind us for, uh, a play or a, a band concert or choir concert or anything. I just think that, that enhances. We're, we're a board of education and, and we're there for our students. That's our number one priority. Um, and to help show off what's going off, maybe see some things behind us, I think would be a great thing. And if it's a sports event and there's some, uh, screaming and hollering going on and cheering going on, you know, we can always assume that our, that our team is doing great and give them a thumbs up and, and keep moving forward. It's really quiet in there, um, even with a sports event going on, uh, you really don't hear a lot. So, um, you know. The, the idea right now, um, is to move to that location for our regular July meeting. Uh, and we would have a microphone set up for the public to come in. Uh, they can walk right up in one of the aisles and speak. Um, and, and you know, we have three cameras that would be available so that, um, everything's covered. Um, and Mr. Boardwine, I, I have to speak with him again, but when we last talked, he was going to contact the company that installed the. Uh, I'm gonna take a stab at this. I think it was the audio and video equipment that's, that's there to make sure he understood. Uh, how everything worked. I mean, he's doing a great job with it, but he, he just wanted to make sure that he knew everything, get some more people involved. So that it's a smooth transition for us. Um, so as far as I know, everything is still on track. Um, for us to move, even the radio station will be able to pull off the audio easy without lugging equipment down to Deffer every month. Uh, so they'll be able to pull the audio, uh, right over at the radio station. Which is right around the corner from the auditorium and, uh, still broadcast that. So, uh, if there's any other comments, we can take those now. If not.
Kevin, I just, I do have a comment. Um, I am. I'm thrilled that, 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 uh, being brought up and, and, uh, it is going to happen, providing we vote on it. Um, but I know the one thing that Maplewood does, they, they even have parts of their board meeting and Mike, Mike, you have it in your superintendent's report where you bring up a, uh, promising practice. I mean, wouldn't it be great if something's going on in one of those classrooms that we could actually take a tour of that classroom and see what's going on? And show off that extremely, um, well-built and very, and I'm very proud of the building that's there and the facilities that are there. So we could show those things off to the public in, in the case that they couldn't possibly get there for a basketball game or a theater event. Or a band concert or any of the, uh, multiple sporting events that we have there. Um, I, I just, I think it's a great idea to show off what we have in that building because I don't think it's, I don't know that we do that enough.
I agree.
Good, good move. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to everybody that was involved in this. It's just, you know, it's an idea, but there's, there's other people, um, Jim Boardwine, Bob Long, Andreas Johansson. Those are the, those are the guys that have to make it happen. So, uh, so far we're moving forward. Um, any other new business? Hearing none, moving on, uh, any old business? All right. And moving on to, uh, Board President Recommendations. The first. Uh, it is recommended the Board of Education change the location of future meetings of the Board from Henry Deffer Intermediate School to the Streetsboro High School Auditorium. The dates and times will remain the same.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. Uh, those dates and times were, uh, voted on in January. So those will remain the same. Uh, and this is just a formality as CJ said earlier, just to make sure things stay legal. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, please call for the vote.
Mr. Violi?
Yes.
Mrs. Baba?
Yes.
Mrs. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Grimm?
Yes. Motion carries. And item B, it is recommended the Board of Education enter into executive session to consider matters required to be kept confidential. By federal law or regulations or state statutes to consider employment of a public employee or official. And preparation for conducting or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms. And conditions of their employment with possible action to follow.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? And hearing none, please call for the vote.
Mrs. Baba?
Yes.
Mr. Violi?
Yes.
Mrs. Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Grimm?
Yes. Motion carries. We are in executive session at 7:18 PM and we will stand by and wait for Andreas to give us the cue to move over.
Yep. Moving you over. And Mr. Dalva, just checking, I'm, I'm, I don't, Mrs. Devers and Mr. Isle.
Uh, just, um, just myself today and CJ and the board.
Check.
Thanks for all your service, everybody. Have a good evening. Thanks, guys.
You, thank you both for being here tonight.
Hi, guys. Have a good weekend.
Night. Thanks, guys.
Okay, here we go.
Finally, early.
Just a quick reminder, it's Andres. We'll still, we're gonna resume the recording here so you can adjourn the meeting. So. Three, two, one.
So we're still live on YouTube?
Yep. Still live on YouTube and I'm gonna continue the recording. Go.
All right, so we are back, correct CJ?
Yes.
Sorry, Andres, we, we are back?
Yes, correct.
Okay. All right, we are out of executive session at eight fifty-three PM. Mr. Dahlbald, do you have any other recommendations?
I do not.
And CJ, just to confirm, you have no other recommendations?
No, sir.
All right, thank you very much and thank you for the discussions in executive session. At this time, I would ask for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'll move.
I'll second.
You're moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, please call for the vote.
Mr. Violi?
Yes.
Mrs. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Baba?
Yeah.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Graham?
Yes, we are adjourned at eight fifty-three PM. Again, our next regular scheduled meeting in July is planned to be at the high school. We'll see you there. Thank you.